Welcome to tonight's forum for the North Mankato Mayor and City Council Candidates, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the St. Peter area. My name is Colleen Jacks, and I'm the President of the St. Peter Area League, and will be your moderator for this evening. The League of Women Voters is a local, state, and national nonpartisan volunteer group. The League encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government, and it influences public policy through education and advocacy. It does not support candidates or political parties. Our event tonight is designed to allow the candidates an opportunity to express their views on issues important to members of the public. Candidate forums follow the unbiased and impartial format established by the League of Women Voters in Minnesota. This forum is being recorded in its entirety without an audience on September 24th at the North Mankato Police Annex. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. I will ask questions tonight submitted by the public to the League via email prior to this evening. League question facilitators screen all questions and may rephrase, combine, or eliminate questions to avoid duplication. We will not ask questions that are not relevant to the office or that are designed to make a statement rather than solicit information. Questions that are hostile, embarrassing, inappropriate, or of a personal nature will not be asked. As forum moderator, I have the final responsibility as to which questions will be asked. All candidates listed by the Minnesota Secretary of State's office have been invited to participate. Two of the candidates were unable to attend this evening. They were offered the opportunity to submit written opening and closing statements. With us tonight are mayoral candidate Scott Carlson, who is seated closest to me on my left, your right, and city council candidates Bridgette Quentin and James Whitlock. Voters will select two candidates to serve on the city council, each for a four-year term, and the mayoral term is two years. Candidates will have two minutes for opening statements. Then, on a rotating basis, candidates will be asked questions. They will each have two minutes to answer, except for lightning round questions that require only a yes or no answer. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. Timers will hold up a yellow sign when 15 seconds are left, and a stop sign when time is up. Candidates may finish their sentences. Our timers this evening are Krista Eichorst and Rita Curtin, both members of the St. Peter Area League. We have asked each candidate to be specific in their opening statements as to the reasons they are running for office, and what unique qualities, skills, experience, or expertise they would bring to the job. We'll start opening statements with mayoral candidate Scott Carlson.
Yes, thank you for having us tonight. It's my pleasure to be here, and it's really exciting to be on the ballot for a second term. I will say that in my opening comments, it's just been an eye-opening experience in the first two years in a positive way. I ran for the mayoral position two years ago because I felt it was time to take lifelong wisdom and things learned, leadership through coaching and being in the classroom, and take that to a different avenue or venue, and I thought the city government was a good place to do that. I've been a lifelong resident of North Mankato. I've been, my parents or my family have been in the Mankato area dating back to my great-grandfather, and I'm just very proud of this city, and proud of the area, and just want to give back the best that I can to the community of North Mankato, the city of North Mankato, and continue on with what I've learned and what we've done the last two years. So, you know, I will say that I still hold that I am, you know, try to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' dollars. I try to be sensible. I'm a bridge builder. I like to keep things very, you know, open and open-minded myself, and I like my fellow council members and people I work with to be open-minded also, and be willing to think of other avenues and other ways of doing things. I believe in the last few years, two years as a mayoral, or the mayor of North Mankato, that we have done that and done a good job of doing things differently and trying to pivot and be creative in what we do.
Okay, moving on to the opening statements from the city council, I will read a statement submitted by candidate Billy Steiner. Okay. "I'm sorry, but I will not be able to attend the forum on Tuesday. However, I want it known that I'm seeking an eighth term as North Mankato council member. I have seen much in my 28 years on the council, some good and some not so good, but I think the current council and mayor, as well as our administrator, are definitely on a good projection for our great city, and I definitely want to remain a part of it for the next four years. We are progressing well with our expansion in the industrial park, which is good for our taxes. The latest large project, Gordinis, is up and working, and joins an already robust group of businesses in the park. We must always be aware of how we expand, but I feel our current administration is leading the way for a well-planned expansion. I personally led the way for the elimination of the 'darn-nice-area' moniker, which was met by widespread disdain and ridicule, and this was rammed through by the previous administrator with no input from the council, at least not that I was aware of. I have been open in my support of keeping the Judson Bottom Road open for traffic as long as it is safely possible. I'm always in favor of keeping our taxes as low as possible while still maintaining our great public services. I am a strong supporter of Chief Gullickson and his fine police department, and hope that we can add a drug task force agent to the department to try to keep up with this continuing epidemic. I will always try to remain a reliable public servant and respond to the concerns of our citizenship. I hope to be given the opportunity to serve another four years, my eighth term as city council member." So now, we will go on to opening statements, first from Bridgette Quentin, and then from James Whitlock.
Well, thank you for being able to have the opportunity to be here this evening. I have grown up in this area. I've been here my entire life. I grew up on a family farm just a few miles outside of town. My dad is still there and has been in that same house since he was two years old, so to say roots, I have roots here is pretty accurate. I want to take the opportunity for this to give people the opportunity to meet me. This is my first shot at putting my name in for city council, and so, a little bit about me, I am, again, grown here. I am married to my wife, Jody, for almost three years. I have two grown sons, and I am a current legal assistant manager for a law firm here in, or in Mankato, Burkitt's Law. What can I bring? What specific things do I bring to this, other than new ideas, a new face? The area of business that I work in, that legal area, means that I have to be a moderator of how to balance the good and bad. People don't call attorneys because they're having a good day, so you have to be able to work on your feet, and I do think that this also plays into that a little bit. You are given these opportunities, and let's, you know, figure out who, what, where, what can, how we can advance the city in the right direction.
Okay, thank you, James.
Yep, thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to say some of my thoughts and maybe some opinions also. Oh, I was on the planning commission here in North Mankato from 2000 till 2003, and in 2004, I started a group called the Business on Belgrade Association, and I steered that for about 16 years, and now it's turned over to some other people. And so, but I did start the Booking on Belgrade, Blues on Belgrade, Beer on Belgrade, and Bells on Belgrade. Those are the events and stuff that we put together. I was doing most of it by myself until the gentleman that owned Spinner's Bar, Shaun Angie, and then he asked if he could help out, and that's really kind of where we started gaining some traction. We tried to put it together for the first four years. We never gained any traction on the thing, so. Anyway, that's a little bit about me. I grew up here in North Mankato, went to Loyola, Mankato State University, and thinking back on some of the stuff, like in 1965, we were part of the emergency flood protection to come over here and sandbag, and those people that were at Loyola were, they were sent to the Main Street Bridge, and those that were in Mankato High School, which is west now, then when they were dismissed, they went to Cibley Park.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start on the questions now, and the first question will go to James Whitlock, followed by Bridgette Quentin, and then Scott Carlson. It will be the order. Okay, so the first question is, "What do you see as the biggest issues facing North Mankato in the next 10 years?"
Being ready for it. And I've always said this, that if we're a town of 14,000, we have to act like a town of 30,000. We need to know where we're going, what we're doing. Here's a good example. A power line for all the clean energy that came up here that's going to the, out to the Willmarth plant out here. It's the clean energy, and they had that scheduled, that they were going to bring that, those large transmission lines, they were going to bring them right through the middle of Northport Industrial area up there, which changes our plans, because all of a sudden, they want to start bringing this thing through, and we had people saying, "No, we will not go there, establish there if that's going to happen." So, it took us quite a while on attorneys and stuff in Washington DC to get an act to Congress to change that transmission line two miles west of where we were, and so we got that done. That's where you've got to be prepared, and that is seeing and guiding. Different types of businesses want to go into a certain area, you start guiding those types of businesses, and so you don't want to hodgepodge of residential, and then hard industrial, and all sitting by each other. It's got to be, it's got to be broken up into smaller sections of it, so. Other than that, I mean, it's just, there's things that come up that we've got to look at, and one of them right now is the expansion of the Northport.
Okay, thank you. Bridgette?
I agree with Mr. Whitlock that you need to be prepared. There's, however, saying that, there's only so much you can be prepared for. Have a plan, have a direction, know what your goals are, but be able to be flexible as things happen. We don't know what's going to happen with the, you know, growth with taxes, with anything that's coming down, so have a plan, but again, be able to be flexible with that plan.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I got a lot. I jokingly tell the council and the administration I probably should have been a city planner, because I do really, I park at all areas of North Mankato and think about what could be, what maybe will be, what do we think could be down the road that may never happen? And, but I, to what you're saying, I believe that having the vision, looking ahead, planning like we are going to be a bigger city, but knowing that we may need to pivot, we may not grow like we think, things can change, right? Laws, ways of development, you know, different types of industry that will come. So, some of the big things that came to my mind were just like that, planning ahead, streets, I know, and it's not that what we do is wrong, but things like putting new development too close to like Lookout Drive, leaving town on 13, doesn't leave us a lot of room for expanding to maybe a four-lane or a four-lane road down there. What if we grow like we could? So, we've talked about ways to protect, maybe things like County Road 41 for future widening of lanes if we have that kind of traffic. You know, commerce, I know the big picture for us is trying to expand on commerce and grow that and expand our commerce businesses on Lookout Drive after commerce has kind of filled up. I think that's a good vision, but where do we go after that? You know, so just planning ahead. School placements, things like that, if they decide that what the land that they have right now maybe doesn't work, where do we put it? Do we, you know, we can tell them where we think it should go, how this works in our future. And then finally, like trails and parks, like planning ahead, connecting our neighborhoods, and new water sources. That's a big problem that North Mankato is having right now, is finding new water sources other than Mount Simon.
Okay, thank you. So, the next question will go first to Bridgette Quentin, then to Scott Carlson, and then third, it will go to James Whitlock. And the question is, "How can the city council ensure that North Mankato citizens have input regarding decisions being made by the city? How would you use input from the public and city commissions and boards in your decision-making?"
I think input from the citizens is fantastic. How do we get it? A survey is always a survey. I guess I may be of that generation where surveys are, you know, sometimes overlooked. I'm not going to get on social media necessarily and fill one of those out. However, I do think that being able to approach the council, be it at a meeting, be it direct, and give that input should be received openly. I was at a fairly recent in-person city council meeting, and I love the fact that the meetings are online. That's amazing that people can watch them, but all the chairs were full, and it was so, so great to see that all the chairs were full from community members. Now, granted, it was a big-ticket item, you know, that people were looking at, but I think it would be wonderful if at every meeting, all the chairs were full. The how, work in progress, but I definitely think that it is needed and should be encouraged by everyone. Council, social media, however it works, get the people to be involved, want to be We know best as far as a council is concerned, so just because it's, the community has given us the option or the idea or things like that, doesn't necessarily mean that every option will come to fruition, but I do think that they should, the community should feel like they have the ability and are being heard with those.
Okay, thank you. Scott Carlson?
Yeah, again, you know, communication is huge, and I'm very relational. I don't know what other mayors have done in the past, but I know personally, when I, as much as I can, I'm a pretty busy person, but as much as I can, I've surprised quite a few residents by coming to their homes to talk in person with, you know, either good, you know, good things or a lot of times just things they're concerned about, and I've gotten a lot of like wide eyes saying like, "Why are you here?" And I said, "Well, you gave me your address," and they wanted to make an in-person visit. So, you know, I think that's important, that, you know, it's authentic that we want to come or I want to come and see them in person like that. You know, and I think it is important to have those committees and to guide us and to kind of do some of that, you know, take in some of the public comments that we don't always hear, but also I do, am cognizant that sometimes it tends to be a vocal minority and a silent majority, and so I just kind of, not always, but I try to keep that in mind. In addition, you know, we also, as a council, see, hear, and know, you know, just know more things that need to be private that some people don't, so sometimes when they think that we're not listening, or, you know, we're not doing the right thing, maybe we're not sometimes, it happens, but also we tend to know a little bit more in private that others can't know, and so we're just taking all the information and making the best choices possible for the city, so.
Okay, thank you. James Whitlock?
Yeah, I agree with both of these folks here, that, yeah, a survey. How are you going to get this survey accomplished? Well, in this day and time of social media, we have social media, we have online, we have any dozens of ways to conduct a survey, but what are the parameters to the survey? And how far should you go with it, you know? And those that are proposing that idea, which we've got a couple in the making right now, from constituents that would like to move a certain agenda forward, and what, is there a written agenda of, you know, what do you hope to accomplish? Where do you want to go with this thing? What do you want to do with the results? And what is it going to cost the city? Is it going to cost us something? Is there something that citizens can have? A committee where they would have their input to it and then report their findings and stuff to the city council, allow the city council to make the judgment on it, so. That's about what I have on that one.
Okay, thank you. And the next question, you will go first again, James Whitlock. Bridgette will go second, and Scott will go third. And the next question is, "Now that recreational cannabis has been legalized in Minnesota, what issues, if any, does this present to the city? What are the key ordinances involving cannabis use and availability that the city should enact?"
Thank you. We're just going through it right now. I believe that was legalized last October, so I think we're just about a year there, but they haven't sold it. I know up on the Indian reservations, they were allowed to sell it, but that's a sovereign nation by itself. But we're just getting information now, and we're getting most of our information through the police department that is coming to the city council. How many outlets can we have? Who can sell it? Where it can be sold? It, you know, you can't be within 1,000 feet of a school. We were at five. I know that we were, was brought to the city council for five entities that could, locations that could sell it, but I just didn't think that was enough. Just looking at Belgrade Avenue down there, the liquor businesses and stuff, we've got four down there, five actually, that, including Dino's, they have liquor also, that, and I just, it was like, well, if we're at five, then we have it all in one area. That's what I want. I want equal opportunity for the businesses down there, but then we've got to go up on top of the hill, and we've got a couple of places up there that could be selling it, so. It, there's a hodgepodge of questions yet to come up with, and I don't know if the state has all the answers yet.
Okay, thank you. Bridgette?
Working for an attorney, I see lots of things with this, with the new laws happening regarding cannabis, from sales to all of that. I think that it's something that North Mankato shouldn't stay behind too far in. I appreciate the idea of wanting to make, you know, sure that we're not just jumping in with both feet and, "Hey, you get a license, you get a license, you get a license," and so I'm glad that they've been able to, you know, put some numbers on it. I do think that five is far too few, so I'm glad that they are looking at increasing that. I give the city attorney a lot of credit for, and the council for having the dialogue with the city attorney to make sure that we're not going too far with it. I am anxiously waiting to see what that final number will really be, not necessarily this year, but moving forward in the next few years.
Scott?
I've, I'll say somewhat reluctantly, have to sort of, you know, I don't want to say fall in line, but be fair with this, what's been legislated by our state government. As a health, I got my master's in school health, I'm not sure what we're doing is the greatest for our state and our kids in our state, you know, as far as choices they are able to make or access they will have to products, but, you know, low potency like we're doing right now, I think we talked at a council meeting about level playing field, maybe for all businesses, and not saying, "Well, you know, you can sell alcohol, but only you, you and you can do the THC, alcohol with THC in it." So, I kind of believe in, right now, with keeping a level playing field as far as businesses that can sell the low potency. When we get to the higher potency cannabis, it's going to be a much bigger decision for me, and I do say, I will say that we do look to Chief Gullickson and his staff for what they look at, look to as like what is common sense and what will work for our city and our citizens, and so we do really highly respect our police department, and we want to support them the best we can with that also. You know, how many, I think we upped it to, we voted at least to, up it to 10, I think for now, knowing that we'll have to look at it in the future. It's, we're just kind of easing into it until we know what the number is. But yeah, I mean, that's, it's going to be a long road yet while we figure things out and while the state gives us some guidelines on what we, what we're going to do and what we're able to do, I guess, so. There's a long, long ways to go, and I don't know what some of the end results are going to be for myself and the council yet, so, thank you.
Thank you. So, for the next question, you will go first, Scott Carlson, and James Whitlock will go second, and Bridgette Quentin will go second, or third, excuse me. And this is a lightning round question, so it's a yes/no answer. "The city police department has recommended hiring a drug enforcement agent to work with a local drug task force. Do you support funding this position, yes or no?"
Yes, I do support funding it. I think it's, again, I support trying to do what it takes to get, you know, drugs out the streets, out of people's hands. You know, I wasn't necessarily for...
It's not a full two minutes.
Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's just, yes or no?
Cut me off. Did you hold a stop sign up?
James Whitlock?
Absolutely.
Okay. And you, Bridgette?
Yes, 100%.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, for questions... Okay, thank you. Okay. So for question number five, um, Bridgette Quentin will go first, then Scott Carlson, and James, you will go third.
Is this the lightning round again?
No, no, this is-
Okay.
(laughter) Okay. Uh, so this question, um, question number five, housing and transportation availability consistently show up as pressing priorities to voters. What opportunities do you see for the city of North Mankato to address these concerns?
Oh goodness. Um, housing is always a big one. Um, you know, fortunately, we are in an area that there's not as many unhoused people as, um, in a big metro area, which is great, but it's still here. So I don't know that I have a great answer of how do we fix that. Um, I think the bigger question is, or the bigger part of that is not to forget about it and to make sure that it does stay a priority. Transportation, same thing. Um, you know, making sure that we're having some continued relations with, uh, the busing companies that run both Mankato and North Mankato and keeping those routes accessible to people to be able to get to a grocery store and to do things like that. Um, I, I don't know that I 100% have a, yep, map this out here, um, other than just making sure that it does not get pushed to the wayside with that. So.
Thank you. Scott Carlson?
Yeah, transportation, I mean, it, that's the one that's, we're kind of stuck a little bit in a little conundrum here because we don't have, they, they would like to run or we would like to run bus routes, city bus routes through, you know, more dense areas and we don't have a lot of that over here yet. Um, so we don't have as much for busing routes that, uh, they will, we can budget for, um, citywide, Mankato, North Mankato. Um, so that's, that's kind of a tough one, just finding that money to provide more access to busing like that or, or, uh, public, uh, transportation. Hopefully we can solve more of that, um, in the future. I know we have been working on that at the council level and, and with, uh, with the local, um, mass transit system. As far as, uh, you know, uh, affordable housing and just the, the housing problem, I, I'm in for like whatever we can, you know, do, uh, creatively, I guess. We're going to have to be more creative. Um, when houses are going for $286,000 in lower North Mankato, that's not affordable even for a, a family that's just starting out down here. Um, I know I've looked, I've looked into, uh, a variety of communities, doing tiny home communities. Um, you know, that might be a way we need to go. Um, I've, I had another person bring up like, why don't we subsidize, uh, a transition into senior, like patio, smaller patio homes for people? Because a lot of times people aren't getting out of their homes because they're paid for. They're too, maybe too big and they don't want to be in a multi-story home, but they're paid for and they can't afford to get into a, a, a smaller home that's more for, um, senior living. You know, they're not ready for, um, you know, oh, terrorists yet, but, uh, they want it, maybe need to get out. So, um, somebody said, well, why can't we subsidize a little bit, help them get out? So that opens up that market for people needing to get into a smaller startup home. So creativity is important and, uh, I, I look forward to trying to figure out more ways to find, uh, um, you know, answers to that North Mankato.
Okay. Thank you. James Whitlock?
Yes. Transportation. We can talk about it till we're blue in the face and we probably won't get anywhere with it. Um, affordable housing, same thing. Every time you get a group of people together, you hear that in, in a, in a governmental setting, talk about affordable housing, talk about transportation. But it seems like everyone has got a different opinion of it and how it comes out. There are certain laws that govern, um, through the state on who can have the, the, the busing, who can't have it. Um, for us over here, we do not, uh, uh, North Mankato, we don't, we don't run anything on the bus. We do it all through, uh, uh, Mankato, uh, Schatz, Lesinger down there, um, runs that department. But they listen to us. Uh, we've got more now, uh, like being able to be, be picked up at certain areas and get to certain areas. There was a void in there for, geez, for a couple of years. Uh, we picked up what was called Ruby Ride for a while. That was better. That, that went from door to door. You could call like the day before and make an appointment and they would come and pick you up at a certain time and deliver you. You could go anywhere like from Mankato to, or North Mankato to, uh, the, uh, the River Hills Mall. Then you could go from River Hills Mall to the airport. Um, but once you came back to here, then that completed your round on the thing. So anyway, Ruby Ride only lasted for a year and it was, uh, it was very highly subsidized, um, the thing. But, uh, they get into the, uh, affordable housing. That's one of the keys. That's one of the balancing points when you get up into that North Port Industrial, where you need people, where are you going to put them? So.
Okay, thank you. So for the next question, um, you will go first again, Mr., um, Whitlock, and Bridgette Quentin will go second, and Scott Carlson will go third. And the question is, what environmental issues does the city need to address?
Hmm. Um, I know we've got a personal, um, uh, one that we really need to address and we are trying to do that somewhere in there with the access, the acquisition of land in the North Port Industrial area for what we're buying it for, for what we would sell it for. We have to have someone available to buy it before we, we as a city can stick our neck out, um, to, uh, to, uh, um, to purchase that amount of land. We just passed it at our last city council meeting. It was, it's, uh, uh, 2,300,000, uh, 146 acres of land in Belgrade Township where, um, where Bridgette grew up in that, that area out there. But, um, uh, to, uh, to, um, the, 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 the one problem that we have at this point in time, and that is, what can we do with the public works building? That used to be an old city dump, which is down by the, by the new, uh, uh, swim facility. That used to be the city dump, but what we're getting off of it now is we're getting methane gas out of there. And they've come in and they've, they've, they've piped it, they've opened it up. So it does emit out, but the area needs to be cleaned. And it's a problem we created. So there's no federal money available for the city because we created it. But if we sell the property, then there are, um, um, grants and stuff available to whoever the purchaser is. Trying to tie this all together and it's all North Port Industrial. If we sell for a profit up there, we build a brand new, um, uh, uh, public works up there, which doesn't put the, the burden on the taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you. Then, um, Bridgette?
Being a farm kid, the environment is always something that stays pretty relevant in my world. Um, be it industrial, be it, you know, trying to clean up anything, be it the bees and, and wanting green area for that. Things need to just stay within balance. We can't go too crazy one way. We can't go too crazy the other way. Um, so I guess as far as, I don't know any particular issues that are jumping out that say this needs to be fixed right this very second. In my world, looking at anything dealing with the environment, the biggest word that I, that ever pops into my brain is balance. Stay and make sure that we're not getting too industrial. Stay, make sure we're not getting too green. Stay and we're ma-, you know, that, that balance of all of those things because they all have their place. So.
Okay. Scott Carlson?
Yeah, I think, um, I, I wrote down about four, but probably the top two in North Mankato right now are, um, as Mr. Whitlock mentioned, uh, you know, we do need a new public works facility and the old public works facility is, is not very good right now. Um, becoming in disrepair, not to mention it sits on the old city dump site. So I think that's probably one of the bigger pressing issues because, um, I've, we're, we're pumping water from out, from under the city pool to keep it from floating with the high water table sometimes. And I see what comes out from under that water, which I would think it'd be filtered by them, but it's coming out pretty rusty, which I'm not an environmentalist. I mean, a scientist, but I would think that some of that's leaching from the old dump site across the street. So that's one of my big things and that does tie into what Mr. Whitlock said about, uh, new public works facility in, uh, in the, in the industrial park. But number two is probably environmentally is probably just water source. Right now we're really hurting for, to grow in a healthy way because we don't have water. Um, we can only access Mount Salmon right now. We're not allowed to drill new well, a new well in Mount Salmon, which I'm not necessarily against some of those things because it does preserve that, that deep aquifer for future generations. But we do need either to get some, uh, flexibility from the state and the DNR on that, or we're going to have to be a little more creative and find some balance with maybe another, uh, source, uh, maybe a shallower aquifers or shallower sources through the river or whatever. So I'm, I'm glad we are kind of thinking about some of those things, um, and how we're going to solve those issues. And that's, that is an environmental issue. It also means that we may have to figure out better ways to solve some of our wastefulness. Um, and we have like at the Follenstein Park with, um, now capturing the water that was going right down the sewer after it's used once and, and reusing that for our field, uh, watering. So we are trying to solve some of those issues and be more environmentally friendly and, uh, I'm looking forward to more way, more things that we maybe need to solve in the future.
Okay. Um, in the, for the next question, um, Mr. Carlson, you'll go first, and then Mr. Whitlock, and then Ms. Quentin, third. So, question seven, the Judson Bottom Road was again closed this summer due to rock slides and the collection of associated debris following heavy, heavy rains. The geology associated with the Judson Bottom Road also affects the long-term stability of Lookout Drive. In your opinion, what is the best way for the city to develop and implement a long-term solution to this ongoing issue?
Well, that is a big question. Um, and I, that's another place I've gone and sat in my car and just envisioned what we may need to do. I know, I know most of the landowners, uh, that are closer in to us. Um, and I respect that they own the land. They would like to keep that land for at least now and maybe some future generations, but they may, they know that there's going to be, need to be some creative thoughts on how we're going to preserve that road or fix some other problems. Um, I don't have all the answers, but I have, I mean, there, there, we could be creative, reroute the road a little bit and maybe come up to upper north. It's a big, it's, that's a big project, but it would give us a long-term solution that would also open up maybe some development on higher, um, that are, uh, farmland that's above the Judson Bottom Road. That would be North Mankato maybe. Not saying that's what I choose. I'm just saying there's some creative, creative thought that way. Um, and I mentioned, uh, water, needs for water. Maybe if water comes from a river source of some sort, maybe, maybe that ties into some sort of redirection and, uh, a road project that would tie into Judson. Um, I don't know what for sure the answer is. I know that I do, um, really, um, I really believe that, you know, we need to do something that's good for everybody and even if they're not our citizens, you know, be good neighbors too. So I hope we can come up with something that's going to be suitable for everybody. Um, maybe again, vision, long-term vision, good for my, my kids or my grandkids someday and their, their kids. Um, and that's looking to the future and, uh, you know, preserving that beautiful, uh, um, you know, scenic byway and also finding ways to kind of secure, um, areas for growth and water and things like that in the future. So, thank you.
Mr. Whitlock?
Uh, Judson Bottom Road. How can I describe? Hot, uh, hot potato. Um, as, as Bridgette had said before, she said she just loved it when she came to the city council meeting and the place was packed. The place was packed because they were all Judson Bottom people. And I'll tell you, there's so much history with, uh, the Judson Bottom Road for each and every one. If you see a citizen here in North Mankato, ask them about Judson Bottom Road. Oh, they're going to tell you a story. They're going to tell you about something that happened down there or they participated in something. Yep, I'm, I'm not a geologist. Um, but, uh, we, uh, there, there was a difference between sandstone and limestone. Now, when the, uh, the Rapidan Bridge, uh, uh, the, uh, the dam collapsed out there, that was, that's all surrounded by sandstone out there. So once that started eating away, it started just, uh, there, there was a landslide. There was no way that it could have been stopped. With limestone, what we have here, there's, there's, uh, portions of, of the, uh, limestone that run then underneath Highway, uh, 14 up here, the, or Lookout Drive, which used to be Highway 14, 169 and 60. But, uh, that all runs that, that in a, in a, uh, 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 stratosphere type of, uh, way. And I don't know what, what's going to happen with that. But there's some way that we can get up in there and shore up some of that and hope that we can stop it before it comes all the way down. I want to keep the road open. There's a lot of people out there. There's nobody on Judson Bottom Road that is a citizen of North Mankato, but they're a citizen of Nicklet County. So we have to do something for them.
Okay, thank you. Bridgette?
Um, I grew up playing on the Judson Bottom Road for sure. Absolutely. Um, the thing that I am hoping happens, again, not a geologist, I'm not a scientist. I don't know what the right and the wrong is. I just hope it gets looked at. The, you know, every couple of years where the road has to be closed because it's, you know, when we get too much water and everything's falling and it's not safe. Nobody wants to put anybody where they're not safe by any stretch. Um, so I'm glad that it's being looked at and being addressed. And I don't know what the right thing to do with it is. Um, that's why there are people that are in those jobs that are not me, that can make and help present options for that. Um, so yeah, I would love to see something done with it if it can be, you know, kept open and again, generations far after me to be able to have the same beauty and scenic, you know, everything that's on that road. I sure hope that, that others will get that opportunity far after I'm gone.
Thank you. So for question number eight, our next question, um, Bridgette Quentin will go first, then Scott Carlson, and James Whitlock will go third. And this is a lightning round question.
Yes or no?
Yeah. (laughter) Okay. Okay. Following the recent approval of a deer management plan and policy for North Mankato, would you support a deer hunt within North Mankato to control the size of the deer population? Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. The next question, um, will be you, Mr. Whitlock first, then Ms. Quentin, and then Mr. Carlson. And the question is, according to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, a growing scarcity of workers is now recognized as one of Minnesota's most significant barriers to sustained economic growth. This point was reiterated last week by Megan Dayton, senior demographer for Minnesota at a talk given in Minne- in Mankato. What do you see as the role of city government in addressing this worker shortage?
Again, I got to go back to North Port, Port Industrial. If you have the business that is available to come in here, let's say it's a data, a, a data, uh, company, then you need personnel to, uh, work that. And where do you get them? Where do you put them? Where do they buy their groceries? We have no- We have no grocery store up there. I don't really know what city government or state government or federal government is doing about it. But I just, I don't know. I really just do not know.
Bridget.
I think that if the North Mankato City Council had an answer to that, everybody in the world would come knocking on their door. Um, it's, it's a, it's a horrible scenario to be in. There's, there's companies and businesses that are begging for people to come and work with them and for them. And the people just don't, they can't be, you know, developed out of thin air. So how is that looked at? How is that fixed? Um, businesses need to get a little bit creative um, with how the jobs themselves are presented and, and looked at. That being said, sometimes you can't, like you need to have X amount of people do X amount of jobs. So again, if, if uh, anybody has bright ideas, I think that the entire United States would take them up on it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I basically have the same answer, but we, I mean, if you don't have the population, if you don't have the birth rate to keep up with the people exiting the workforce, it's hard to, to do that. So basically, it's kind of dog eat dog, right? So what can we do locally? We basically need to capitalize on what, what our assets are. And our assets are, we, we have SCC, Bethany, Gus Davis, Martin Luther College in New Ulm, Gus Davis in St. Peter, MSU, Rassism Business College and, and other places you can go get, you know, two-year degrees or whatever in the area. And so really what they're already trying to do is capitalize on the um, higher education system or even the two-year colleges and, and say, hey, now that you have this degree, how would you like to stay in the area? Right? So we have a lot of institutions that educate people and are educating the next generation workforce. We can't let them leave. We have to keep them home. And I know that means some other city or small town or whatever doesn't get them, but that's kind of the way it is right now. So it's, it's keeping the people that are coming to Mankato, North Mankato area, St. Peter, New Ulm. It's keeping them local in, whether it's our city area or other local area cities. This is kind of the way it's going to be, um, you know? So it's, it's really being competitive and capitalizing and having partnerships with, with people like that that are educating the next generation of workforce. So that's probably the best answer I have right now.
Thank you. So for the next question, question ten, you'll go first, Mr. Carlson and Mr. Whitlock will go second and Ms. Quentin will go third. And this is a lightning round question. Okay.
I don't have to think too much?
And the question is, fifty-three cities in Minnesota, including Mankato and St. Peter, have historic preservation commissions. Will you support a historic preservation commission for North Mankato to help preserve our architectural heritage? Yes or no? Or maybe?
Maybe. And that's really, I need, I, I'm still new, so I, yeah, maybe.
Okay.
Yes, as long as it's presented correctly.
I'm going to go maybe as well. I, I, I'm not sure of that yet.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the next question, you will go first, Ms. Quentin and um, then Mr. Carlson and then third will be Mr. Whitlock. And this question is overseeing the budget is a major responsibility of the mayor and city council. How would you balance the city residents' needs for services with the tax burden placed on them? What key factors would you consider when um, thinking about this, about balancing? Oh, yeah.
I dropped out. I was wondering, could you repeat that question?
Sure. Overseeing the budget is a major responsibility of the mayor and city council. How would you balance the city residents' needs for services with the tax burden placed on them? What key factors would you consider in relative to the balance? Right? Um, yes, you are.
Okay. Uh, how would you balance a budget carefully? Budgets are the necessary evil of any entity that you are working within. Um, I think that right now, I, I have to give the council credit for really being mindful of how they are balancing that budget, making sure that we are looking at what is not only currently needed, but making sure that things that might not make the budget right now aren't getting passed off for too long. The... People always aren't going to get what everybody wants, so it's, it's very much a balancing of wants and needs. Because I am not currently on the council, I have not seen all of the numbers and, and the, those wants and the things that have been put right out there. So um, without that, you know, I, I can't really give very specific examples. But again, I'm, hats off. You guys are, are definitely making sure that, that you are being very, very mindful of that budget. And as a resident of that, I do appreciate that, so.
Okay, Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, I mean, I like to be open-minded. Um, I, I've changed my mind a few times with when it comes to, you know, wants, needs, um, you know, what we're, what we need to spend on. I, I said before, I am in favor of uh, you know, a drug task force agent, so now I can expound upon that. But I wasn't sure if, you know, can we do that? You know, you kind of see what the city, uh, the finance director and, and everybody puts forth to you. And that's where listening is great. It's like, you know, I think the last session we, uh, Councilman Peterson brought up, you know, what if we did this and shuffled it a different way? Could we add the drug task force agent? I didn't think about that. And I usually try to think creatively and that was, it's really good to hear your council members, fellow council members. It kind of changes your tone and what you, what you think you can do. So I, I appreciate that, you know, the institutional knowledge with uh, some council members and, and what comes with being a new mayor and new council members and that we can bounce those ideas off. Um, you know, we, we use the word kicking the can down the road, um, and the drug task forces one and, you know, city vehicles and just things that we've done to cut taxes and cut the budget, but you can only do that so long. So it's kind of that balancing act like you'd said. Um, and also just being mindful that, you know, it's not, when we increase a tax or, you know, the levy, the tax rate, you know, it doesn't just impact like our taxes. They also have to look at what the schools may, might be doing for bonding or referendums, what the county is going to do with their taxes, what the state's going to do. So we might think, well, it's only this in our, in our budget or our tax, what we're doing for taxes. But it's, you know, what's everybody else doing? How's it going to compound in the end on their, on their taxes in, during the year? So um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's probably the, the best thing is, is just listening to each other and really trying to bounce things off and be creative, so.
Thank you. Mr. Whitlock.
Out of the last eight years that I've been on the city council and stuff, only twice have we had to raise our city levy to accommodate what we needed to do. And uh, one, one year was, was the, uh, when we got saddled with that, uh, the uh, the old motel out here. We had to, we had to bring up the levy just a little bit on that. But see, once we, once we set the levy, we set the levy last city council meeting. And we set that at eight percent. Now, between now and December twentieth, I think it is, we uh, we can, um, we can lower that rate. We cannot go over it. So we said, Lord, what, what, what do we need to do here? We talked about this earlier, the drug task officer. Okay, here's four ideas. We could go to this levy, this levy, this levy, this levy. Number one, it's going to give you that officer. It's also going to give you some other things. But the rate then is too high for the people. So we compromised and went with eight percent. Are we going to see a drug task officer out of that? We very possibly will, but it's just being able to kind of manipulate from one drawer to another drawer to get things accomplished, so. Yeah, that's about all I had on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is going to be the last question before um, final closing statements. And um, Scott Carlson will go first. No, no, James Whitlock will go first. I'm reading my grid wrong. Scott Carlson will go second and you will go third, Bridget Quentin. Yes, it's not a lightning round. Okay. But the last question um, is how do you check the accuracy of information you receive to avoid spreading misinformation?
Don't, don't listen to Facebook. Avoid that at all. Check it out. Check out what, whatever you're hearing. And uh, the last time I, I was in a position to do something like that was when Channel Nine in Minneapolis was saying the, the collapse of the Rapidan Dam is imminent. And that's when I, I called down here to the city and I said, you know, we've talked about this for sixty years, but we've never done it. I think we better start laying that, that levy out here. And what that levy is, is that, that from the flood wall protection down to the Judson Bottom Road entrance. That is where it would come over into us. So if you go across the street on Lee Boulevard here, there, there's a, a beautiful little picture painted on the concrete wall. Well, that's actually part of the levy because, so we go from that levy to that levy and now we've blocked that off. But during that period of time, we thought that however that breaks, that's coming straight into, so that comes into the Judson Bottom Road at, at a, at a, at a T-bone. And we thought that if that whole thing let go at one time, we would have it. But when it started chewing around the outside and we could see it, we're already building this levy here. So it uh, and I think that was uh, not, not sixty days, ninety days ago that that was, but it was hard to remember because they had all the semis lined up out here, ready to dump that clay, so.
Okay. So then um, Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure occasionally in, in the past, I'm not sure in this office of mayor that I've spilled some misinformation, you know? I think the, the thing is, you know, if I'm ever told to keep something quiet, I keep it quiet. And, and I, I related the dam too. I think my dad called me and gave me some information about something that, whether it was the dam broke or the, the dam store went in or the house went in or whatever. And I said, are you sure? And he said, yeah, I heard it from so-and-so. So I said, well, before I start spreading that, I'm going to go check. I checked and it hadn't happened yet, you know? And so it's, it's more about, you know, when you, when you get some information, it's fact-checking and, and it's, I try to fact-check and go back and say, is this something that I should be sharing, you know, or not, not be sharing? Not that we're all, we're not perfect. I mean, it's not like I've never made a mistake, but I really do try to keep things private if they're supposed to be private. And if I'm told something, I, I'm trying not to jump on and say, I've got, I'm the first with the information. I'm going to go spread that right now. I try to make sure I've got my, especially in this office, if you're dealing with things like that, flooding and broken dams and things that, you make sure you've got your facts straight before you share it with other people because, you know, you've got a lot of followers and a lot of people listening to you. And if I say something, oh, they must know, they're the mayor or the councilman or whoever. So, yeah, I mean, that's basically, you know, what I try to follow by is just fact-check and, and uh, you know, consider sources. And like you said, not, not going to follow Facebook and all that stuff. And for my information, I'm trying to follow, you know, our local leaders and uh, people you trust for that info before, before we share that stuff, so.
Okay, Bridget.
If, if you're told something and you have the opportunity, go to the source. Don't take it third-hand. Don't, don't try to, and you know, to Scott's point, being the first to say something, really, you're probably not going to be the first in reality, you're probably the thirty-first. So um, I, again, you know, the Facebook thing, all, all social media, there, there's nothing real on that. And so misinformation can go quickly. It can, you know, spiral out of control. So being mindful of that, making sure that you're not part of that tornado that's getting whipped up into, you know, oh, so-and-so and so-and-so and so-and-so. And so just realizing, taking a step back, making sure, again, in my job, I get told lots of different things working in criminal law. And so you really have to um, do your, do your due diligence and make sure that what is being told to you is the truth. So lots of fact-checking, lots of, of just stepping back, taking a, a minute to realize what's really happening and then going from there with it.
Okay, thank you. So candidates will now have two minutes to give a closing statement. Scott Carlson will go first, followed by James Whitlock and then Bridget Quentin.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's been a pleasure, I mean, bigger pleasure than I thought initially to be uh, first-term mayor, first two years. And so uh, I've jokingly said, I don't know why it's only two years because I've just barely starting to understand things and starting to get a really good grasp and getting to meet people and network. And so um, I'm, I'm running unopposed this time. And I hope this has been very informational so people know more about me and know where I'm at and, and can approach me with some ideas and things. Um, you know, following up on some of the things uh, earlier too, um, you know, on Judson Bottom Road, I, I'm in for everything, anything and everything, right? What keeps it open? And if it's a gravel road, minimum maintenance gravel road that goes a little bit and we do some other things, creative things to kind of fix things up, I'm, I'm excited to look at those things. Um, you know, I was excited, you know, we talked about finances and I was excited the last meeting when we were setting the max levy that uh, we all had, we all had a different, a different plan. We wanted, we all picked a different one of the four options and we had to come to an agreement on what option we would choose. That's exciting to hear those, hear those disagreements, you know, or what we want to do and have to come to a, have to come to a consensus for that. Um, you know, uh, back to the, the affordable housing and what we're going to do with that. And I think we kind of left out that we're really still in the early stages of a, a land trust where we can set aside land for affordable housing and things like that. And that's coming down the pipe. And we haven't heard a lot about it lately at, at council level, but I know we're still working through those, those things. Um, you know, and, and uh, I guess uh, surveys too. I want to go back, I didn't say much about surveys and online. I, I just think multiple avenues of that are, are great. Um, so I'm just looking to be, offer different opportunities for different age groups. And finally, um, you know, again, I try not to be in the know. I guess people know, like, I'm really not in the know, I'm like, I didn't know that. So I try not to be in the know, so I actually am kind of clear-headed on what I want to share and when, how I'm going to decide, you know, things going forward, so.
You're up, Mr. Whitlock.
I am? Um, well, I kind of want to touch on strategic planning and stuff, you know? What, what we've done in the past years and stuff is in guiding businesses to certain areas. Um, what we're looking at right now is, is um, the, the implement dealer up on top of La Ray out there, Arnold's. out there, Arnold's. Forty years ago, they, that was a good place for him. Today, it's not a good place, there's a better use of that property. So, to guide them, again, out to our industrial port area. I always feel that farm machinery, it probably sells a lot better when it's out in the country by the people that buy it. But other than guiding businesses and stuff, making sure that we continue with our art, art sculptures within this city, I'd like to see that expanded. I would like to see concerts, the quality of life events that we have here, that, that, that stuff. Keep it going, keep expanding it. It's, it's some stuff that adds to the, to our city. The next is like, the North, North Port Industrial. I keep going back to it. We have the North Mankato Port Authority, and there actually was a port authority, there actually was a port in North Mankato at one time, on the river, on the Minnesota River, and it's about where the old Perkins is now. That river actually flowed back through there. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Quentin?
Well, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to be here. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. As being a first-time candidate, this is the, giving me a great opportunity to get my name out there, to have people see who I am. I am going to look forward to continuing to connect with the residents and meet additional people. I've been out doing, you know, knocking and talking, and I love interacting with people and getting the reaction of, oh, you're going to do this? Okay, great. Well, not there yet. So, but this is, this has been a great opportunity to get my name out there, so thank you.
Thank you. So, this concludes our forum. If we did not get to your question, please contact the candidates directly. Contact information is available from the Minnesota Secretary of State's website under Elections and Voting, Candidate Filings. I want to thank our candidates for participating this evening. Thanks also go to Tony Peregrin and the City of St. Peter for videography support, as well as my fellow League volunteers. To our viewers of this recording, thank you for watching. For more information about voting and the candidates for North Mankato Mayor and City Council, please visit www.vot411.org. And remember to vote. The election will be held on November fifth, and early voting started last week on September twentieth. Thank you.